I would look at staff and ask for confirmation of the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notices properly been provided.
Yes.
Thank you. With that, could we have roll call?
Mayor Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner France.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Okay, with those that are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we do have one proclamation, 3.1.
Item 3.1, the month of October 2020 as National Arts and Humanities Month in the city of Salina, Brittany Willer, Chairman of the Salina Arts and Humanities Commission, will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Whereas the month of October has been recognized as the National Arts and Humanities Month by thousands of cultural organizations, communities, and states across the U.S., as well as by White House and Congress for more than 30 years, whereas arts and humanities enhance and enrich the daily lives of every American and should be accessible to all, whereas arts and humanities play a unique role in the lives of our families, city, and country by unifying communities regardless of age, race, ethnicity, and participants gain a better understanding of each other and their cultures. Whereas in a world where the economy and daily life is adversely affected by COVID-19, the arts are recognized as more important than ever to help relieve stress, avoid isolation, find joy, and create hope. Whereas the arts remind us of the power of humanity amidst hardship, facilitate safe spaces for important community dialogue, and aid in recovery efforts as we navigate new ways of being. Whereas arts integration into education improves academic performance and student retention. Whereas the arts spark creativity and innovation as sought after skills by business leaders. Whereas the arts improve health care resulting in shorter hospital stays, better pain management, and less medication when included in patient care plans. Whereas the arts and humanities can drive tourism and revenue to local businesses as visitors seek out authentic local cultural experiences. Whereas the nonprofit arts industry strengthens the economy, generating $166.3 billion in total economic activity annually, $27.5 billion in government revenue, and supports the full-time equivalent of 4.6 million jobs. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Michael L. Hoppick, Mayor of the City of Salina, do hereby proclaim October as National Arts and Humanities Month in Salina, Kansas. I call upon our citizens to celebrate and be a part of the arts and culture in Salina and in our nation, particularly in this turbulent year when the arts can play a critical role in sustaining and encouraging communities. I encourage greater participation by our citizens to take action to support the arts and humanities.
Thank you. And Salina is fortunate to have the Arts and Humanities Commission and works that are done in our community. I was going to ask if you had anything planned, but I have a whole page here of things that are going on. Are there a couple of things that you would like to highlight that you'll be celebrating?
Absolutely. We have a new exhibit at the Salina Art Center. We have a virtual chamber series that will feature the Salina Orchestra, or not Orchestra, I'm so sorry now I'm having a brain, I left mine over there. And then, all throughout the month of October, we will be posting and encouraging everyone to take part in arts and culture throughout our community. Thank you so much. It is the Salina Symphony. So, thank you very much.
Okay, and I have a certificate here for you, so thank you for coming and sharing with us. Okay, that brings us to Citizens Forum. This is the chance for individuals to come forth and discuss, or to talk about something that is not on the agenda. We ask that you limit your comments to five minutes or less, and we ask that you please state your name and where you're from when you come up here. Do we have anyone that would like to address the commission?
Dalton McDowell, Salina, Kansas. Melissa, that comment that you posted about the Salina Police Supporters on Facebook Tuesday, that was uncalled for. We did not do anything that you mentioned that. They've threatened us, they've done everything they could to scare us, and we're not going to be intimidated with this nonsense anymore. So if they want to act like civilized, I'm more than willing, and the group is more than willing to talk with them and discuss with them, but if they want to act like what their counterparts in Minneapolis and everywhere else do, we're not going to deal with it.
Wow, can I just respond since that was directed at me? I just want to say that I do stand behind everything that I posted, and maybe it looked different from my perspective, but I was deeply ashamed of the way that our citizens conducted themselves at our study session last Monday. And I'm sorry if you don't agree with that, but from where I was sitting, we have a lot of work to do.
Is there anyone else that would like to approach, Commission?
Reverend Dolores Williamson, Salina, Kansas, retired National Guard, 22 years, and elder in the United Methodist Church District Superintendent, Salina Ann Hutchison, Kansas. I just have a question. With the Study Committee, there was some conversation about a continuation of, to have another session in the evening that's accessible to those who worked during that time that it was held the first time. Have you thought about when that's going to happen? I still would like to see more conversation around the Sunflower Coalition's proposal and some healthy civil conversation around what's been proposed and what the police department.
Staff has sent out some dates to the Commission, and those would be either starting at 6:00 or 7:00 in the evening. We're still trying to finalize a date, I believe, on that.
Do you think that will happen in October?
October, yes.
Okay, alright, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joan Ratzle, Salina. I just wanted to follow up on the email that I sent to the Commission about mask wearing and, you know, social distancing, the ordinance, and I don't know if some kind of explanation or update is going to be forthcoming today. I just didn't want to let that slide.
I think I'll let Deputy Manager.
Yeah, sure, Jacob Wood, Deputy City Manager. I'm not sure that we have necessarily an update. I will tell you, as far as enforcement of the mask ordinance goes, we do have an email address that we set up particularly for people to complain or lodge complaints or ask questions. That email does go into my box, so I'm the one that handles all those emails. I have made numerous contacts with businesses in the community just to talk about the ordinance and what the requirements are. As far as the Commission meeting, the study session we had last week, we had that at TPEC because we anticipated there would be more people than what we could accommodate here. Honestly, we did not anticipate there would be near as many people as there were there. We had 240 chairs set up. We didn't social distance those chairs. We anticipated that we would have enough space that people would be able to social distance. In the future, we will, being spreading those out a little bit more, we're going to have the next meeting at TPEC, but it will have the entire room, and we will spread chairs out, and masks will be required, and we'll be putting up signage, making sure that people realize that there are requirements for masks during those events. So, not sure if that answers your questions, but that's kind of where we're at today, so...
Thank you for the update.
My name is Ken Creer, Salina. I'm not aware if we're on the agenda. They're trying to remove the covenants in Holiday Manor Edition. Is that on your agenda today, or would you like our input from it, or where does that stand?
I do not see that on the agenda.
That is not on the agenda. It should be on the agenda in the next couple of weeks, but it'll be published when we do have that on the agenda.
We will be notified what's going on.
We're not going to send out notice. There's no requirement for notice, but it should be in the next two weeks, so I would be looking at the packets.
We just need to keep coming back till we find out what's happening.
It'll be in the packets on Thursday when we send the packets out. You should see it on the agenda.
You can go to the website, and the agenda is posted.
Yes.
Okay.
We've got some things we wanted to share. Thank you.
Okay. He's, we lost him again? Okay. We have our city manager who is quarantined calling in by phone, so I need to get him reconnected, so...
Do we have your back?
Yeah, I have no idea what's happening. I'm not touching a thing.
Okay.
We'll try again, thanks.
Thanks. Okay, is there anyone else that'd like to come forward during Citizens Forum?
Mr. Mayor, if I have a comment about the decorum of the study session last Monday, would you rather I hold that till other business?
Yeah, why don't we? Then we can discuss, we can, as a commission, discuss anything that would come up under that, if that would be okay with you? Okay, with that, we will move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of September 21, 2020.
Okay, do I have a motion or to approve?
I move to approve the minutes of September 21, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda, item 6.1. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes 4-0. That will lead us to administration, 7.1.
Item 7.1, second reading, ordinance number 20-11042, authorizing the execution of a loan agreement between the City of Salina, Kansas and the State of Kansas for the purpose of financing improvements to the city's water distribution system.
Yes, Ms. Pack.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. This ordinance, this is the second reading of this ordinance. However, at the last meeting, Commissioner France did question whether we did need to do an additional debt authorization for this project. We did reach out to our bond counsel, and they advised us that if we ever wanted the ability to refund these loans with general obligation bonds or revenue bonds, that would be necessary, but it is not necessary for this particular loan. So we may look at doing that just in the event that we might want to refinance these loans, but at this point, she said it wasn't necessary for this loan.
Thank you. Okay, there was no comments received as to this ordinance. Or do we have any questions for staff? Any comments from the public? If not, I will bring it back to the Commission.
Mayor Hoppick, I move that we approve on second reading, ordinance number 20-11042.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve ordinance number 20-11042 on second reading. We will have a roll call.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner France.
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges.
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick.
Aye. That passes 4-0. That will lead us to 7.2.
Item 7.2, first reading, ordinance number 20-11043, authorizing and providing for the countywide public safety communication system and authorizing the issuance of temporary notes and/or general obligation bonds of the city to pay the cost thereof.
Hey.
Good afternoon again, Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. As we know, this project, the radio, emergency radio project, has been going on for many years. Began back in 2017 when we signed a consulting agreement with TUSA to design and propose some alternatives for the countywide radio system. In the last few weeks, it's been moving very rapidly. September 8th, you had a joint meeting with the county to consider recommendations. On September 21st, you approved Resolution 20-7877, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Motorola for the city's portion of that contract. That total contract amount over 15 years was a little over $3.8 million. The amount upfront was about almost $2.4 million. This project does include the construction of radio towers, updating the dispatch center, new radios for all public safety entities, and a software system to enable communications throughout the county. While it's not anticipated this project will reach the proposed authorization amount of $3 million, this action allows for any additional unexpected costs to be funded through the issuance of additional general obligation bonds if necessary. This step of the process is just that, we've approved the project upfront, the capital project, this is actually giving us the authorization at a certain amount to issue debt for this project. It is anticipated that general obligation bonds in the amount of approximately $2.4 million will be issued this fall, and we'll have that in the next item that comes before you. And any additional bonds that might be necessary will be issued in the spring of 2021, once the project is near complete. Repayment of the bonds will be scheduled out of the Debt Service Fund, supported by property tax. You have four options around ordinance number 20-11043. The first is to adopt on first reading, authorizing the completion of the countywide public safety communication system, adopt the resolution with any amendments you might see appropriate, postpone consideration to a specific time and date, and provide staff with direction for additional information or amendments that you would like to see, or do not approve the ordinance with direction on either to not complete the project or to find alternate funding for the project. Staff recommends option number one. I'll stand for any questions?
Any questions for the...
The project estimate is $2,388,000 roughly.
Correct.
Plus 500, okay. And we're proposing to issue $2.4 million in bonds.
Yes. Which includes all the closing costs and...
Right, right. And it also says that there is $300,000 now that we've got set aside for the project that would be available. Wouldn't it be wise to issue $2.1 million in bonds and use that $300,000 upfront, thereby lowering our future debt service schedule?
We could, that's part of the next item that we would be discussing that. For this particular item, we're just authorizing the project total. So yes, I don't disagree with that comment, but it'll be under 7.3.
Okay.
I had a similar question, but I think you asked it a lot better than I did, so thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Any comments from the public on this? Okay, with that, I will bring it back to the Commission for action.
I move approval on first reading, ordinance number 20-11043.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 20-11043. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes 4-0.
Mr. Mayor, Debbie Pack again. I do have our financial advisor coming for item 7.3, and he's not, has not arrived yet. So if we could postpone that item until he arrives, that would be appreciated.
Okay, anybody have an issue with jumping to 7.4? Do we have any, do we need to do anything, or how do we need to address that?
I'll maybe best if you considered a motion to table that.
Table that, okay.
Mayor Hoppick, I move that we approve, or we table item 7.3 until bond counsel arrives.
Second.
Is that sufficient, or do we need to put it behind to...
No, I think that's fine.
That's fine, okay. We have a motion and a second to table item 7.3 till bond counsel arrives. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, with that, we will move on to 7.4.
Item 7.4, Resolution number 20-7876, authorizing staff to submit the fiscal sustainability plan for the wastewater collection and treatment system to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment.
Ms. Tasker.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Martha Tasker, Director of Utilities. The Water Resource Reform and Development Act was passed in 2014, and it requires recipients of the Kansas Department of Health and Environment low-interest loans for wastewater system improvements, not water systems that we spoke of earlier, to develop and implement a physical sustainability plan. The purpose of that requirement is to ensure that recipients of the loan manage their assets in ways that promote long service, avoid failures, and maximize long-term financial self-sufficiency of the wastewater system. The current loan with KDHE for the Markley Magnolia Sewer Project requires a physical sustainability plan be submitted to KDHE prior to final closeout of the project. The physical sustainability plan must include asset management plan and a physical plan to provide funds necessary to pay for ongoing obligations with operation, maintenance, repair, rehabilitation, replacement expenses, which requires the city to provide some basic requirements, which I think we currently follow in our normal operations, such as implement a performance measurement and management strategy to ensure high-quality and efficient use of our facilities, make it a priority to be energy-efficient and water-efficient, inspect and maintain our existing wastewater system, maintain resources to repair the system, and establish user charge fees to fund the ongoing maintenance, repairs, rehabilitation of our system, and competitive contract services, and review our revenues annually, which are items that you're all familiar with and we do on a regular basis. KDHE has reviewed the attached facility sustainability plan and determined it's compliant with their requirements. The attached physical sustainability plan was prepared to include the future wastewater treatment plan improvement project, which is planned to be funded by the low-interest loan from KDHE. So the plan was developed with multiple appendices that can be updated as necessary when we move to the wastewater plant. For example... For example, it defines the wastewater collection and wastewater treatment system description, includes our annual budget, annual water and wastewater rates, our capital improvement plan, and KDHE has an operation, maintenance, and replacement guidance document. It talks about certified operators, adequate equipment, routine cleaning of sewer pipes, manholes, and inspection, which apply to the wastewater collection system at Markley Magnolia. There's a much longer list when we move to the wastewater plant project, but it can be adjusted and put in as an appendancy. There's no additional physical impacts to the budget. Our annual budget addresses the issues that we've spoke to. Staff has identified three options for the city commission to consider. The first is authorize staff to submit the fiscal sustainability plan for the wastewater collection and treatment system to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment. Option two is to postpone submission of the plan to a specified time and date and provide information or request for further consideration. Third would be to vote to deny submission of the plan, which would result in reimbursement requests from the loan being denied by the Kansas Department of Health and Environment. Staff recommends option one. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
It says KDHE has reviewed the attached and determined it compliant, but they haven't seen the whole report?
Yes, they've seen the entire plan.
Okay.
From the proposed document at the end, starting with the cover page through all the appendices. Submitted that, I wanted to make sure that it met their requirements before I brought it forward to you.
Not a question, but a comment. You know, I think it's kind of telling that we have this requirement for a sustainability plan that is apparently a reasonably new requirement.
It is.
And all we have to do to meet it is, by and large, assemble the existing documents we have that we use to manage the system, which, you know, sends a message, I think, at least I take it, that we're doing a pretty decent job of doing that. And I just want to commend the staff, whoever's responsible for, you know, taking us down that road.
When we set the plan to KDHE, their document was a little more fuzzy in how it was put together, and I put it more in the format of what we do, and their response, this is great. So, they were pleased with the document and how we put it together.
Any questions? Any comments from the public? Okay, if not, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
I would move that we authorize staff to submit the fiscal sustainability plan for the wastewater collection and treatment system to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize staff to submit the fiscal sustainability plan to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 4-0. I still do not see bond counsel, so we will move to 7.5.
Item 7.5, resolution 20-7875, reaffirming the Saline County Solid Waste Management Plan with addenda.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, this request is for you to consider resolution 207875, reaffirming the 2020 Saline County Solid Waste Management Plan with six addendum. In 1970, KDHE adopted, or the state of Kansas, the Kansas Legislature adopted an act that requires an active solid waste management plan. In 1994, the city of Salina in Saline County signed an agreement naming Salina as the Solid Waste Management Planning Authority. As the governing body that oversees the plan, the city commission must act on this recommendation in order for us to remain compliant with the applicable state regulations. On September 2nd, 2020, the Saline County Solid Waste Management Committee met and discussed the plan recommendations and approved those recommendations unanimously to recommend affirmation of the existing plan with the addenda provided. It's worth noting that from a plan perspective, this is a matter of plan housekeeping. The way the Saline County Solid Waste Management Plan is built, our annual plan reviews consist of submitting the appendices that reflect all the decisions that the city commission makes with regard to solid waste in the previous year. Every five years, there is a comprehensive review period where we will take all of those documents that have been placed in the appendices and adjust the plan accordingly. I would echo something that Martha said regarding the last topic. The KDHE is always very pleased with our plan, and it's generally received with, in a very positive manner. The addendums represent the decisions that were made in 2020. We saw the approval of the purchase of the trucks and carts, and then due to the COVID pandemic, we extended those contracts for an unknown period of time, and then we ultimately approved for them to be submitted, and we made several changes to the solid waste operations in Salina. In 2022, we are scheduled to do an annual, a five-year review, so we will do one more annual review next year. This is all due to the KDHE by the 6th of December. And I've identified three possible options for city commission's consideration, and that is to approve the resolution reaffirming the plan with addenda for the required 2020 annual review, postponing approval to a certain date and providing staff with additional direction, or three, denying the resolution reaffirming the plan that would result in the Saline County Solid Waste Management Plan being out of compliance with KDHE regulatory requirements. And with that, I'll stand for your questions.
Questions for staff?
One on page two of the blue sheet, under the 10-year planning cycle discussion, topics such as single-use plastics, yard waste, composting. I take this to assume that this committee would be the sort of the steering committee, the group that would initiate the initial discussion, because we were talking about plastics before, we didn't really have an organization, a department, an outside group that we could just give the project to and say, here. We had a presentation, but it didn't go any further.
Right.
Can we assume that this committee would be charged with continuing that discussion?
I think what you would expect to see with regard to these topics is there is a chapter in the plan that is built on issue discussion and recommendation. And so, I would fully expect the, and that's chapter six of the plan, and I would fully expect that the committee, if these are just topics that I had collected over the previous five years that I knew were relevant, that we've had conversations in the community and hear about, and I would present them to the committee and see if they would agree that they should be included in that issue discussion and recommendation. So, it might be as simple as something that Mr. Black referred to earlier when he said, you know, working toward a plan that includes a waste diversion, you know, a waste diversion plan with a certain end. So, that would be, that would be part of the discussion. It would then be left up to city staff and any necessary body to assemble what that plan might look like throughout the next 10-year planning period.
I like the list. Is this something that the city commission could then charge that committee with doing the initial research on a plan or proposal and then bring back through the proper staff, you know?
I certainly think that would be within your purview.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
My questions were basically along that same line. Mr. Black made some interesting observations about statutorily what the committee's role is, and I know that it's something that we've talked about in years past when we've affirmed this solid waste management plan. And I guess my question, maybe I'm taking it a little bit farther than Commissioner Davis is, is how do we get, how do we empower this committee to do some of this research and to engage in some of this, you know, these community discussions that we've been wanting to have?
I think the committee has the ability to assemble and make recommendations to staff that we would then present to the commission. I think that's always been the case. I think in years past, it is, it's been necessary to, and I tried to make the distinction when I said, they would develop like a set of issues, discussions, and recommendations in chapter six. And there is another chapter in chapter nine that deals more in long-term planning and what things might look like. But again, the commission is really, the committee is really designed to provide that place of discussion. So, certainly, they could discuss it and make recommendations, and we would present it to, you know, we would present whatever it is that they're thinking that belongs in the plan to you. Ultimately, you are the approving authority for what goes in the plan. The plan is a 10-year planning document, so it's, so generally, the things that you're going to see in the plan, besides all of the, you know, the data about Salina and the solid waste system as it exists today, is going to be, where do we see solid waste moving over the next 10 years? If that helps.
So, we would be expanding the committee beyond its original stated purpose if we ask it then to come up with the plan or plan proposal?
I would tend to think that it could go that way, yes.
I presume that the plan document is fairly extensive.
It's 10 chapters.
Okay, is it available on the city website?
I believe it is.
I hate to admit this, but I don't believe I've ever actually seen the document.
I think a number of years ago, we've added it to the city website. Unless somehow it was taken down, I'm pretty sure that it's still there.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Okay, comments from the public?
I guess I'm public. Phil Black from 815 Spruce, and I'm on the solid waste committee. The two things that I kept running into, for example, and we talked about this at the last meeting, so this isn't a, I'm not doing a gotcha on Jim here. I don't want to get out the defibrillator if we start saying, our committee's going to come up and present all this to you. But, for example, who brings the agenda to the committee? Because city ordinance says no employees are members of the committee. So, that to me says the committee should be deciding what is its agenda. Secondly, according to state statute, the committee is responsible for getting the plan done, for providing for the plan. So, regardless of what the staff comes up with, we're the ones responsible for it. And there are a number of things that we're allowed to do under the state, be responsible for the preparation of a solid waste management plan, review the plan annually, and provide the city commission or the county commission the report. And then the city itself has a number of similar things that are a little bit more broad. For example, provide a solid waste management system plan to review the plan annually and to hold a public hearing every five years. So, also to provide any recommendations. So, that's broad enough that I could imagine the committee deciding, okay, we want to take a look at what do we see as a plan for 40 years out? And in being able to do that, it would allow us to see everything through that light, as well as dig up the problems with it, which I don't, right off the top of my head, I think it's possible that we'd be very difficult to get through without it being divisive, and I don't think that's a wise thing either. But, so, you know, trying to figure out who is actually on the committee, because the state statute allows any of you to be on the committee, as well as Jim or anyone else. Your own city ordinance does not allow that. So, that's something I think the committee would want to take up and say, well, what are our recommendations to resolve that?
I guess I would ask staff to review that, to see if we have a conflict in our ordinance versus the state's. And it would appear to me that some of the things you were discussing with the plan would be hard for an ad hoc committee to do without leadership from staff.
Yeah, we can't, according to ordinance, we cannot give city employees orders either. But I don't think we're considered an advisory committee. Citizens Advisory Committee, for example, says that you can only serve two consecutive terms. Our committee, our ordinance, says no, it can do three. And nowhere is the word advisory used. So, it could be picky you, and I admit, but I was the acting chair at the last meeting, and I was just wondering, how do we decide the agenda? Because on the school board, superintendent would meet with the president and the vice president of the school board, and they'd work out the agenda. I don't think that's happened, not because he has refused it, but just, I just think you've been kind of stuck with it. So, anyway.
Good points, and we'll get into that. Thank you, Mr. Black.
Thank you.
Good points. Okay, any other comments?
Oh, one left, I'm sorry. I apologize. When I said that our, I said there was the ninth part of the plan that said, according to state statute, that said that you would look at reduction, a scheduled reduction of waste, which includes composting, et cetera, et cetera. I didn't mean for that to sound like we aren't doing that in some form. I think if you break it down into recycling, into the, we saw a lengthy discussion on the landfill, so there is a schedule there. It's just, I don't, one of the things we kind of brought up in the meeting was maybe we should have a very specific category called reduction of waste schedule. So, I don't mean to make it sound like we're not doing anything like that now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no other questions or comments, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
I move we approve resolution number 20-7875, reaffirming the Saline County Solid Waste Management Plan with addenda for the required 2020 annual review.
Second. If I could, I did just have one question, I don't know that you can answer it now, but I meant to ask about how we're coming along with our schedule for trimming back the trees that are going to accommodate our automated trucks. I know that was something we discussed in the past, and you don't need to necessarily address that at this time, but just wondered how that schedule was coming along. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 20-7875. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 4-0. Okay, I see where bond counsel has arrived, so we can move to, we'll move back to 7.3.
Item 7.3, general obligation bond.
I'm sorry, were you going to say something?
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, I do think it would be technically more correct to consider a motion to remove the item from the table.
Okay.
And that is what brings it back before you.
Mayor Hoppick, so moved.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second to remove item 7.3 from the table and bring it forward. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I get a little anxious there, sorry about that. So, okay, Ms. Pack. What's that?
It's that chief's game.
Item 7.3, general obligation bonds, 7.3A, resolution number 20-7880, authorizing the offering for sale of the general obligation internal improvement and refunding bonds, series 2020-B of the city of Salina. Item 7.3, 7.3B, first reading, ordinance number 20-11041, authorizing the issuance and delivery of general obligation internal improvement and refunding bonds, series 2020-B.
Ms. Pack.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. This is a resolution and ordinance in order for us to issue our general obligation bonds. However, they include two ports... However, they're, they include two portions. We have a refunding portion of the bonds, and we also have new, what we call a new money portion of bonds. When we do a bond refunding, usually it takes a process of our financial advisor, who we have with us today, Dave Artiber from Stiefel Nicholas, he's not bond counsel, but financial advisor, sorry about that. And they look at our, our previously issued bonds to see if the market rates have lowered enough for us to, to realize some savings, any savings from about 3% to 5% in the cost of the, the interest that we have for those original bonds. And then they will typically bring that forward as we see those, those interest rates get lowered. The city advisor did review our bonds and did them earlier in the year, but we looked at them again this, late this summer, and revealed that there were savings possible for the 2010B and the 2012A bonds. The 2010B bonds were originally issued as a refinancing of the 2001A and 2002B bonds, as well as some prior KDHE loans. The 2012A bonds were originally issued to finance the magnolia common street sewer and stormwater improvements. In addition to refinancing the 2010 and 2012 bonds, the city financial advisor has determined that the interest cost savings is possible by refinancing the city's 2014 KDHE loans. The 2014 KDH loan was originally issued to finance replacements of existing water distribution pipes. The city has also identified the following new projects for funding with a portion of the 2020B general obligation bonds. The emergency radio system for $2,440,000, which would include cost of issuance, the purchase of the Quint for $860,000, and the purchase of the SCBA equipment for the fire department for $480,000. All of these numbers that I've provided assume an interest rate of 4%, but we do anticipate that to be much lower. Resolution 20-7880 authorizes the offering of public sale. It also gives us the approval to issue the official statements, which is the document that describes the offering to potential investors. The ordinance authorizes the issuance and delivery of the actual bonds. The second reading of the ordinance is scheduled for October 19th, which coincides with consideration of the bids on the bonds. That's the day that we'll get bids on the bonds. The total principal amount to be issued for 2020-B is $9,365,000, subject to final adjustments. As I discussed earlier, the refunding portion of those bonds includes 2010B for $746,665, 20-12A for $1,187,1, and the KDHE loan 2814 for $3,544,700, for a total of $5,478,366. As you recall, the emergency radio project was the project that we've been discussing here lately. We signed a contract a couple of weeks ago. The city commission did approve a 7, a .703 mill increase in 20, in the 2020 budget, which should have equaled about $300,000 in revenue that we would have collected in 2020. Any excess taxes levied with the increase could be used to pay, either pay off other debt, or could be reallocated to, a mill levy to the general fund. So as we go forward, and we don't necessarily need that $315,000, which we're seeing as this project came in much lower, that difference in the mill levy could be adjusted to, to different areas. The fire equipment financing is, we're bringing those forward to you at this point, because back in the spring when we issued our bonds, we had to wait for a public protest period, and we could not meet that requirement prior to the issuance of those bonds. So in this issuance, we are proposing to bond the Quint, which is the replacement of a 2,000 apparatus, and we also, the self-contained breathing apparatus, which is the replacement of 54 SCBA, SCBA harnesses, air cylinders, and replacing the clean air breathing compressor used to fill the air cylinders. City approved the purchase of that equipment on March 9th. This action does not incur any direct cost to the city at this time. Bond issuance and underwriting costs associated with the refunding will be approximately 1.6% and will be included in the principal amount of the issuance. Debt service payments for the bond issuance for the radio project, the Quint and the SCBA equipment are budgeted out of property tax. As Commissioner France mentioned, we could opt to take the 300, approximately $300,000 that we did collect in 2020 and reduce the funding. The proposal here does propose that the, we do the entire project as we noted the costs in the previous action. So we have two items. First item is resolution 20-7880 to approve authorizing for off, the offering of public sale of general obligation bonds dash, series dash 2020-B. We could approve the resolution with amendment that you deem appropriate. We could postpone consideration to a specific time and date that city commission and give us further direction. Or we could not approve the resolution, which would eliminate any possible savings to be realized on the refunding, and would require the city to find alternate funding source for the emergency radio and fire equipment projects. Do you want me to give you both of them, or you want to do one at a time? Both res, the resolution and the ordinance do include the amount for the emergency radio project, so if you did want to amend that amount, we would need to do that in both actions. So the second one is the ordinance and has the same four criteria, either approve, adopt, adopt with amendments, postpone or not approve those. And I could stand for questions, and Mr. Artiber is here, that could answer any questions you might have.
Where is the $300,000 in question sitting now?
It's in the debt service fund. It's, it's taxes we would have collected in 2020 that we levied in December or November of 2019, and would be sitting in the debt service fund.
So it can only be used for that purpose?
To be, yes, yes. To be applied to this project, although it could be applied, applied to any debt service, but it's not that specific. But it is required to be applied to debt service or to reduce the cost of the project.
Would there be a benefit to not using that 300,000? That it would go somewhere? Do we have somewhere else for that to go, to be used?
Not in the 2020 budget, I wouldn't think. In future budgets, where we have already levied that .703, we could choose to maybe move part of that levy to the general fund or for another purpose.
Essentially, it would carry over into debt service fund the next year, and then we can make whatever adjustments result from that next year.
Correct.
Or if it's applied to the project, it reduces the payments for the next 15 years.
Right.
And the, that fund, that debt service that has a fund balance that's healthy?
Yes. It certainly has the $300,000 in there that we would want, that we could apply to that project.
My personal preference would be to reduce the amount of, amount to be issued for the radio system from $2,440,000 to $2,140,000, which is close to that $300,000 difference. That way, we use money for its intended purpose and we save money down the road.
Yeah, I like that.
So I would say that the savings on the refunding is actually pretty impressive. 7% is, is a good return, and particularly since some of these issues have already been refunded once. So, you know, that's always good to look at that, and I think we normally do, that debt issuance time is to see if we can, you know, save a little bit. So that's a, that's a good, that's a good savings. And I knew that would bring Mr. Artiber to the dais.
You shouldn't have said anything. David Artiber with Stiefel Nicholas. It's a, a pleasure to be here. I think Debbie did a really good job of summarizing the bond issue and the process. I guess the only thing that I wanted to mention is that, as Debbie mentioned, we're set to receive bids on October 19th on the issue, and we tried to structure the sale because, quite frankly, we wanted to not get too close to election time, just to avoid potential turmoil in the market. So that's why we tried to schedule the issue fairly, fairly soon, rather than maybe scheduling it closer to the election. So that's the only thing I wanted to add.
And I know Ms. Pack said that she's assuming a 4% interest rate, but considers it to be lowered. What are the, what are the kind of?
I would suspect it would be below 2%.
Yes. I was going to, when I saw four, I thought, that seemed a little high, so.
Yeah, conservative budgeting, yeah.
Okay, well, that's good. That's even better news. How many, when you do this, will each one of these have their, will it be three separate bond issues? Will you just do one?
We'll just do one.
How does that work when you have one that's a 15-year term and the other, and, or two that are 15-year term and one's a 10-year?
That's a good question. The way the bond issue would be structured, it's actually structured in, it will be structured in individual components. So there'll be one component for the Quint, there'll be one component for the, the breathing apparatus, one for the radios, and then each individual component's then for the, for the refinancing pieces. Each will have their own individual maturity schedule, but they'll all be combined into a single maturity schedule when the bonds are sold.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, okay. So when it's, when it's put out for bid, that's all in the detail and everything?
They're just bidding on, yeah, one issue. They'll see one issue, but it'll be broken apart.
But, but the schedule is called out specifically so that what, you can't get to the schedule by taking the, you know, the 5.4 million or whatever and saying, okay, over 15 years, it's this amount per year. It, it doesn't, it's more detailed than that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments from the public? Okay. If not, I will bring it back to the commission.
I, see if I can figure out how to word this. I will move that we adopt on first reading. Okay, let's see the resolution first. I will move that we approve resolution number 20-7880, authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation bonds, series 2020B, with the provision that the total funding amount be reduced by $300,000 to recognize the cash currently on hand in the debt service fund for this purpose.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 20-7880 with the amendment to reduce the funding amount by 300,000. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes 4-0. That moves us to the ordinance.
I will move that we adopt on first reading ordinance number 20-11041, authorizing the issuance and delivery of general obligation internal improvement and refunding bonds, series 2020-B, to fund the emergency radio project, fire equipment project, and refund the 2010B bonds, 2012A bonds, and the 2014 KDHE loan, condition that the total funding amount be reduced from the proposed amount by $300,000 to recognize cash on hand in the debt service fund.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to adopt on first reading ordinance 20-11041 with the amendment to reduce the total funding by 300,000. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes 4-0. And I take it when that comes back to us as a final ordinance, it will have 300,000 reduced? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Looks like we are now ready for item 7.6.
Item 7.6, consider purchase of survey equipment for the solid waste division and consider resolution number 20-7881, authorizing the city manager to execute a cost-sharing memorandum of understanding with Saline County.
Good evening. Jim Koach, Public Works Director, here this evening to talk to you about the replacement of the Rover at the landfill, Solid Waste Municipal Landfill, and then an upgrade to our base station or reference system, which is housed in the water plant here downtown. The Real-Time Kinematic RTK and Global Navigation System GNSS survey equipment for the solid waste landfill division, and to consider resolution number 20-7881, authorizing the city manager to execute a cost-sharing memorandum of understanding, or MOU, with Saline County. We've had a system in operation for several years here in the city, and sometime in the past, the city has allowed Saline County to use the system. The system is needing, the base system or reference system is needing upgrades, and talking with staff with Saline County, they were more than willing to cooperate and help upgrade or purchase, do a 50% cost share to participate in maintaining that system. And that is what the memorandum of understanding refers to. We'll actually get into the actual dollar amount later in the discussion, but I wanted to get that out front, that both the city and the county use this system. We house the reference system at our water plant, but that reference system is used citywide by our city surveyor, used countywide or in, but in the county by Saline County. But then it's also used by our own staff out at the landfill in combination with the Rover. And the Rover, or the actual instrument that they collect data with at the landfill, is having some significant problems and we're needing to replace it. So there are two kind of critical items, as far as the, the capital needs, and then also the memorandum of understanding with Saline County, that we'd like to make sure that it's in writing this time, as far as our obligations and, and their participation in it. So we've had this equipment for over 20 years. It was originally purchased in 2007, and it's, it's specialized computer equipment that ties the base station or reference system on the ground with the satellites that are, that are circling the globe at any point in time. They, this, the stuff on the ground communicates with the satellites, and we triangulate the exact position, and the, the accuracy of this stuff is, it gets better and better every year. That the .05 feet is like an inch. X, Y, and Z coordinates, the actual elevation of the tip of that rover, is that accurate, which is important to us for a couple of different reasons. We used to have to have three or four people on a survey crew to get an X, Y, and Z coordinate anytime you surveyed anything. A single person can go out and get a location and give you the latitude, longitude, and elevation all at the same time. So we've, we've saved a lot of staff time over the past several years by utilizing this equipment. And then particularly at the landfill, we have to locate any kind of special waste. When we bury it, we have to locate where it is, so that at some point in time in the future, if they need to go back and, and do something with it, that they know exactly where it is. So that's, that's regulatory. We use it on a daily basis at the landfill, and it, the Rover at the landfill is experiencing some significant problems just because of its age. We've used it on almost every project that we've done for the city over the last 10 years. We use it, utilities uses it, engineering uses it, parks uses it, development services, all the departments in the city pretty much use this information as far as the base station. We talk about being a two-part program, but really, we want to upgrade the Rover at the landfill this year, and upgrade the reference system or the base system this year, which is a pretty minor expense. We're not replacing everything, we're just getting the software updates and stuff so it'll be more reliable. It'll still be housed in our department, it'll still be, we'll still pay the utilities on it and stuff. But next year, because they're of the same generation, we want to replace the Rovers in the utility department and the engineering department. So that'll be part of the budget next year, is to buy new Rovers for those departments in the neighborhood of 20 to $25,000 apiece. So that's not the request today. The reception for the Rover out at the landfill is about 50% of the time, which delays us in being able to cover stuff up. We're not out of compliance, but it hasn't been a very smooth operation this summer, trying to make sure that we maintain the regulatory requirements. And then the base station. And then the base station, our surveyor reported that he had about 70 days this year where it was unable to establish connections, or they just weren't able to do the work that was required on those days. So that's out of 300, you know, 352 days a year. That's a pretty significant portion, too. We did go out for quotes. There are two major surveying companies that provide this kind of service. Trimble and Lycra are the brand names. The quotes are included. The Trimble unit, not only for the price, but the ease of use, their service that they provide as far as on-call, answers to questions, and reliability, we felt like they were superior, and that is the one that we are recommending. The Rover itself is $20,000 and $20,029. The reference system upgrade is $12,000, of which Saline County has agreed to pay 50% or $6,000 of it. So we are, as far as the fiscal note, proposing that Saline County pay 50% of the reference station, that the solid waste fund balance pay for the remainder of the reference system upgrade, as well as the Rover, which is used exclusively for their, for their, the work that they need. As we discussed earlier, that fund balance currently has a four-and-a-half million dollar budget or balance, but that is, as you also know, going to be dedicated to a lot of future expenses. But this is more than just a standard operating system upgrade. It's something that we have to have yet this year to just stay in compliance. So we are asking you tonight to do a combination of things. We would like you to authorize the purchase of the surveying equipment for the Rover and the base station for a total of $32,039. And at the same time, approve Resolution 20-7881, authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with Saline County to pay 50% of the cost of the reference station. You can do those same things with amendments. You can postpone this if you have some different ideas to guide staff, or you can deny the purchase of this RTK GNSS survey equipment if you so choose. So with that, we'll stand for questions.
Okay, questions for Mr. Kowach?
I presume since this is being paid out of, presented as being paid out of the fund balance, this was not a part of the original vehicles and equipment plan for this year. It was not budgeted as a capital expense?
We budgeted $61,000, but as we made the cuts and stuff earlier this spring, it was eliminated from this year's budget.
So we did anticipate a need. It's just that it's kind of happened before we were ready to undo those cuts?
Right, right.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments from the public? Okay, if not, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor Hoppick, I move that we approve the purchase of RTK GNSS survey equipment for the landfill in the amount of $32,039 and approve Resolution Number 20-7881, authorizing the city manager to execute a cost-sharing memorandum of understanding with Saline County.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of RTK GNSS survey equipment and approve Resolution Number 20-7881. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes 4-0.
Mayor Hoppick, one last thing, just if you could humor me for a minute. We alluded to it in the study session earlier today, but this is my last formal action with the City of Salina. Although I've only been here four and a half years, I've been in government in Kansas for over 34, and it's been a marvelous career. This was an exceptional place to work. It's a pleasure working for you and the community on the number of exciting projects. The city has a lot going for it with the downtown and the streetscape and all of the development that's going on. It's not, it's not an easy decision, but I am retiring in Kansas just to go to work in Nebraska. So it's just, I financially think it's the right thing to do for my family, but it is without some remorse as far as leaving this city because it is a wonderful place to live and work. So thank you.
Jim, on behalf of the city, we thank you for your dedication. I know you had a busy four and a half years. We had a lot going on, and we appreciate your leadership in that department. Good luck to you in Nebraska.
Thank you very much. I will be back. I'm looking forward to the River Festival next summer.
Good. Well, we'll look for you then.
All right.
This is Mike Scragg on the line, if you can hear me.
Yeah, we can hear you, Mike.
I wanted to be sure to have the opportunity. I hate it that I'm quarantined and not able to be there in person, but I certainly wanted to recognize what Jim's done for our community and his tenure with us. I've told him personally, he's got a lot to be proud of in terms of what he's done for our community and the streetscape in particular. And being completely honest, was skeptical that we could manage that project on such a small contingency that he brought forward. He was confident, and not only did he stay within the contingency, saved money and brought it in even lower than the contingency provided. He has done a terrific job for the community, and I certainly wish him the best.
Thank you for that, Mr. Scragg, again. Okay, that will move us to 7.7.
Item 7.7, authorize the fire department to utilize sole source purchasing to purchase five Stryker Power Load Cott loading systems and one Stryker Power Pro XT Cott.
Thank you. Good morning. Excuse me. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Kevin Rose, Fire Chief. I'm here before you today to ask for authorization to utilize sole source purchasing allowed by the city purchasing policy, purchase five Stryker Power Load Cott loading systems and one Stryker Power XT power cott for our ambulance fleet. This will enable the department to retrofit its remaining five ambulances with this cott loading system. In August of 2020, the department submitted a grant request to Saline County in the sum of $130,954.05 for coronavirus aid relief and economic security, or what's better known as CARES funding. On September 4th, the department was notified that the grant would be awarded to the Salina Fire Department. The department currently has seven ambulances in its fleet. The last two were remounts that had the Stryker Power Load Cott loading system installed. So that's why we're asking for five, or why we asked for five in the grant. This grant would be used to retrofit the remaining five ambulances so that all equipped equally and the same. The department wishes to use Stryker as a sole source vendor based upon several factors. Salina Fire Department has utilized Stryker for its cots since 2004. There's basically two major vendors in the cott world. One is Stryker, the other is Furno. We've been a Stryker department since 2004. All of its ambulances are equipped with Stryker cots. Their low maintenance and excellent warranties. The department wishes to purchase five power loading systems and one Pro XT cott that was not included in its most recent remount. That's why the one cott comes in, in the 2020 remount. All of the installation will be done by the department's emergency vehicle technician. These funds are required to be spent by December 31st, 2020. There's no net budget impact to the city. And as they're itemized, the five Stryker Power Load cots, we are getting a $5,000 credit from the vendor because he'll have to remove the current loading system out. Came in at $114,079.05, and the new, and one Power Pro XT cott came in at $16,875 even. Take any questions before I make any recommendations?
Questions or comments?
Yeah, clarification. The Power Load Cott loading system, do those include the cots?
No.
Okay, that is just the system that's in the ambulance that supports cots we already have?
Correct.
Okay, I wasn't entirely clear.
It's hard to see with the pictures I sent, but that's just a track system that's mounted actually in the floor of the ambulance.
Into the floor of the ambulance, so it's easier to roll a cott in and out.
Absolutely. It basically does it for us.
And basically, the other cots we have are all Pro XT cots?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep.
So we're just expanding the system and the superstructure to support it?
Absolutely. And these are two, in the last two budget cycles, we've presented this, and it's gotten cut out. Our intent is to get all of our ambulances with the power load systems for safety of not only the patients, but our people.
I can vouch for the fact that they're a nice ride.
And the way this funding works is we will do the purchase, and then we'll submit reimbursement to the county, and they'll pay us for it. And we actually did receive our first round of CARES money last week. They submitted $905,000 into our account. So things seem to be going well as far as that CARES money goes.
Okay, any comments from the public?
So before you today, your recommended actions are, number one, authorize the department to utilize sole source purchasing to purchase five Power Load Cott loading systems and one Power Pro XT cott from Stryker Medical Corporation in the sum of $130,954.05. Number two, do not authorize the department to accept the CARES funds in single-source purchase and provide direction to the fire administration. Fire administration is recommending approval of action item number one.
Do I have a motion?
Mayor, move we authorize the Salina Fire Department to sole source the purchasing of its five Power Load Cott loading systems and one Power Pro XT cott to Stryker Medical Corporation in the sum of $130,954.05.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the department to sole source the purchase of five Power Load Cott loading systems and one Power Pro XT cott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes 4-0. Thank you. That will lead us to 7.8.
Item 7.8, first reading Ordinance Number 20-11039, amending and repealing certain sections of Chapter 25, Article 1 of the Salina Code by adopting the 2020 Uniform Public Offense Code for Kansas Cities.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Christina Trocheck, City Prosecutor. I am here before you this evening asking for action as it relates, this time, to Ordinance Number 20-11039. I'm asking the commission to adopt the 2020 Uniform Public Offense Code for Kansas Cities as published by the League of Kansas Municipalities and repeal existing Section 25.1. As the commission is aware, the League of Kansas Municipalities publishes a Uniform Public Offense Code for Kansas Cities each year. Generally, that is modeled after the state criminal code. The UPOC serves as the primary criminal enforcement or ordinance enforcement handbook for the Salina Police Department. As the commission is also aware, we have certain local amendments to the UPOC as published. These local amendments are to the disorderly conduct section, the unlawful discharge of a firearm section, the air gun, air rifle, bow, and arrow slingshot BB gun or paintball gun section, and finally, the unlawful possession of marijuana and tetrahydrocannabinol section. There were very few changes during the 2020 legislative session because it was a shortened legislative session, but I have attached the summary of changes for the 2020 UPOC. The primary change, as you will see, is Section 5.7, which is selling, giving, or furnishing cigarettes or tobacco products to a minor. This section has been amended to make it unlawful to sell, furnish, or distribute cigarettes, electronic cigarettes, and tobacco products to individuals less than 21 years of age. This mirrors federal legislation that was passed in December of 2019, and that is the city's understanding as to why it was included in the 2020 UPOC by the Kansas League of Municipalities. The city is, prosecutors are recommending that we decline to adopt the same sections that I had asked the commission to decline adopting last year, specifically the unlawful deposits in sewers and damaging sewers. This is due to the recommendation the city received from the Director of Utilities as we have ordinances that more appropriately cover those topics. Additionally, the city prosecutor is declining to adopt Section 10.13 Barbed Wire, Section 10.18 Failure to Place or Maintain a Smoke Detector, Section 10.24 Smoking Prohibited, Section 10.25 Smoking Posting Premises, Section 10.26 Smoking Prohibited Penalties, and Section 11.3 Commercialization of Wildlife. As again, there are existing ordinances in the Salina City Code that cover this more thoroughly and, in my opinion, in a way better suited for the needs of Salina. The additional ordinances or acts that the city prosecutor is declining to adopt are several actions within Article 7A Crimes Affecting Public Trust, giving a worthless check, criminal use of a financial card, unlawful distribution of controlled substances, unlawful possession of controlled substances, distribution of non-controlled substance, selling beverage containers with detachable tabs, and permitting a dangerous animal to be at large. At this current time, I don't believe that municipal court has sufficient staffing or resources to adopt any additional criminal ordinances. These are offenses that if they are referred by the Salina Police Department, they would go to the Saline County Attorney's Office for consideration and filing in District Court. Finally, the 2020 UPOC has added Section 10.29 Violation of a Public Health Order. The city prosecutor is recommending that this section be deleted as the commission has already addressed this by adopting Ordinance Number 20-11034, mandating face coverings to be worn in public spaces where public, or where social distancing of six feet is not achievable at all times. There are five actions the commission could approve. Number one, approve Ordinance Number 20-11039 on first reading. Number two, approve Ordinance Number 20-11039 with amendments as the city commission deems appropriate. Number three, postpone consideration of the ordinance to a specified date and time to, and provide staff direction regarding additional information or amendments the city commission would like. Number four, approve Ordinance 20-11039 on first reading and provide direction regarding additional information or amendments the city commission would like to request for further review, or you can vote to deny Ordinance 20-11039. I don't have anything further on this agenda item. I would stand for any questions.
Questions?
Just a few. Under Section 9.91, the unlawful possession of marijuana, does completion of that program, well, two questions. Is it linked to any referral for therapy or just that? An evaluation? I mean, it's obviously, well, not obvious, but a person probably has a problem, which would be a given. I mean, is there an end result of that referral that's expected?
Right. I would first preface my comments with telling you the reason I have chosen to add the subsection C is to make it consistent with the state statute. State statute requires a drug and alcohol evaluation for any offender who's under 21 years of age who's been convicted of this section. As to treatment, we do require, if an individual is under 21 years of age, that they obtain a drug and alcohol evaluation from a qualified treatment provider, and the court will typically, almost always, adopt any recommendations that that treatment evaluator makes in the evaluation.
But that does not, let's say, I'll just throw up, pay for the first five sessions or, there's no treatment provision as part of this?
Right, just the requirement for the evaluation itself.
And would that ever, that does not have to be, if for whatever reason the person is being held, I don't know if they would typically be held for a conviction of a crime like this, but would that delay their release until this is completed?
Now, we have, I can't think of an occasion that we've held anyone to obtain. We have, I can't think of an occasion that we've held anyone to obtain a drug and alcohol evaluation. It would, the only scenario I could see that happening is if someone has repeatedly failed to appear in court for their sentencing. The court routinely gives an individual as much time as possible to obtain the evaluation. And additionally, we do try to provide any assistance that we can to referrals to agencies that work on a sliding fee schedule or on a basis of not having to pay for their evaluation upfront. We do try to accommodate all of that.
And with the violation of a public health order, if the city's ordinance, I'm assuming at some point it will be reversed, if the state then issues a mandatory state order, does state law then replace what section 1029 would have provided for violation? That's it. Thank you.
Next, okay. I had a question regarding that same section 9.9.1, and just had a question about patients who may be traveling from one state to another, who are like legally in possession of marijuana for therapy or whatever, and they have the legal prescription. How do we reconcile that if they're like, say, from Colorado and they don't have a prescription from a Kansas provider?
Well, their medical card is only valid for possession and use in Colorado.
Okay.
It would not be valid for possession and use in the state of Kansas or any other state.
Or transportation, even if they were going like from one state that allows it to another just by virtue of the fact that they're going through a state that does not.
Okay, right.
So if I might clarify that answer, it is if someone has a prescription from Colorado, they come into Kansas and they are arrested, they are subject to the penalties under Kansas law regardless of possessing a card that is issued in Colorado.
Yes.
Okay.
Because, yeah, because a physician in Kansas, I think that was the caveat. I mean, a physician in Kansas can't prescribe that, right?
Right, and what the ordinance is referring to really is CBD oil.
Okay.
And CBD oil is allowed for medical treatment in Kansas. CBD oil has a small amount of THC in Kansas, has to be less than 5%. It's derived primarily from the hemp plant and doesn't cause a high. It's used for medicinal purposes. So it's not, it technically is THC, but not to the levels beyond 5%. So it's the CBD oil that that exception applies to in Kansas at that, at this time, consistent with the legislative change in May of 2019 authorizing the use of CBD oil for certain medical conditions.
Okay, okay. So I'm learning a whole lot of stuff. And then the other question I had is something that we've had questions about, and I guess it would, it would refer to the use of medical marijuana here, but also I would extend it to like our mask ordinance. Can, can being asked to reveal a medical condition, is that a violation of HIPAA when it's requested by a law enforcement officer? I mean, is there, is there any exception for any different entities being able to make that request for further medical information?
Well, generally, law enforcement is not subject to HIPAA requirements. Therefore, the way the ordinance is written is that an individual who is claiming that they are using CBD oil for medicinal purposes, it is incumbent upon them upon the law enforcement officer's request to present a letter from their doctor that entitles them to use that CBD oil in the state of Kansas. It is written as an affirmative defense, which is something that the individual must raise during a prosecution. That is how the ordinance is written, and that's consistent with the way the state statute is written on that topic. So in my opinion, that would not, that would not generate any issues with any HIPAA violations on part of the law enforcement officer, as long as, and it's a limited inquiry. Certainly, the officer, in my opinion, would not be entitled to further question the individual about the specific medical condition, but in terms of presenting that letter with fairly limited information in it, I don't consider that to be in violation of HIPAA regulations. And Mr. Bingson might have a different opinion on that. I hope not. Well, thank you. I appreciate that. I really do.
I would not disagree. I would have to explain that certainly any HIPAA related matters, we do have lawyers in our firm that are far more expert in HIPAA matters than I, so.
I didn't need to pitch you on the spot.
No, that's fine. And if there were ever any need to match notes, that could be achieved.
And then my last question, actually, it's more of a remark, is I just wanted to let you know how impressed I was, Ms. Trocheck, with the presentation that you made at the gathering at the Masonic Temple a couple months ago, talking about all the different ways that you're implementing diversions, alternative treatment plans, ways to keep our citizens out of jail and get them to do something else. And hopefully, if we ever have an open study session or you're presenting on something else, I think it would be great to get that word out. I was incredibly impressed, and I just wanted to thank you
Thank you very much.
for all you've done to on that front. So, thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I do have a question on the section 1029 violation of a public health order. As written, does that, is that more generally applicable than to just masking? Because our ordinance is pretty specific. It is masking specific, and I'm questioning if the section 1029 of the UPOC might be more generally applicable and might apply to other circumstances that we would be then skipping over if, by not adopting it.
As written, it states that it shall be unlawful for any person to violate, refuse, or fail to comply with a written order of the county health officer, board of health, director of health issued under their respective authorities.
Okay, so it does apply as more generally applicable than to just masking. So that being the case, should we remove that?
No, I don't think there's any harm if there's any overlap of the two, but I see your point. I don't know what the next big health advisory would be, but if, you know, if we use an extreme example.
The county health officer could order bars to close at 11 o'clock, for example.
True.
And that then is outside of our purview to enforce. Now, maybe the county prosecutor could, I don't know, but it's just a question as to if we want to narrow it to that extent or if we just want to.
I don't see any redundancy in having them both on the book. I don't know if it causes any problems for your office.
The primary purpose of exempting this from adoption is just to avoid any confusion with having the specific ordinance requiring face coverings and this violation of public health order. I certainly have no objection to including it with regard to adoption of the UPOC if that is the route that the Commission feels is most appropriate. I don't have any objection to that.
I'd rather have that on the book than have to come back and do what we went through with the mask each time another crisis comes up. I mean, it's not going to be an every year, let alone every day event, but.
I hope not.
And then I also have a question about the paragraph above it. The justification for removing a, what looks like a fairly substantial list of fairly significant items is we simply don't have the staff to manage that in the court system. Is that a result of increased workload, a result of decreased staffing, or what?
We have never prosecuted those offenses.
Okay.
It was just recently, within the last two years, that the Salina Municipal Court started to adopt the Uniform Public Offense Code. Prior to that, we were limited to the specific ordinances within the Salina City Code, which was a much smaller list than what we prosecute now. There are several offenses that we prosecute now, including the possession of marijuana, paraphernalia, sexual battery, or the three that come to mind, and child endangerment that we never prosecuted before.
Okay, and those, so before, a couple of years ago, Salina Municipal Court ran solely on the basis of municipal ordinances, and the fact that we adopted this code before had more to do with law enforcement operations and what they could arrest people for, but those cases that were not in the municipal ordinance list went to District Court anyway. So this does, has not really changed that in that way. Okay, thank you.
I think that's an important point to make so that it tomorrow morning is not construed that in Salina you can now unlawfully distribute controlled substances or give a worthless check or use a financial card without permission.
And the two primary.
So those are still against the law.
Right, and the two primary offenses within that paragraph really would be the issuing or giving a worthless check and criminal use of a financial card. Those are very staff-intensive offenses in terms of filing those cases. And so I did assess what I felt not only my office, but also the court could handle in way of additional offenses. And I didn't think, I don't think this year is the time to consider that. It's not to say it couldn't be considered in the future, but I don't think it's prudent to do it right now, and feel that those offenses should still continue to be referred to District Court.
So a person who's the victim still has a recourse just in a different court?
Yes.
Okay. And the same is for the dangerous animals?
Yes. And we have other ordinances within the Salina City Code as well with regard to vicious animals that would also cover that type of conduct.
I'm just very curious. What is a beverage container with a detachable tab?
Well, that's interesting that you should ask that because last year I did research that. It, or the tabs on a pop can that are detachable, if they can detach.
Okay.
Yes.
Remember the original top tops? You pulled them out and then you could make chains with them? And I think they are prohibited because people can swallow them.
Yes.
Now, if you have a mustache, you take that little tab that's not detachable and you work it back and forth until it detaches anyway, because once it's caught in your mustache and you pull the can down, you like to have them detached.
Lot of information there.
Mayor Hoppick, the mic fell off again.
We lost Mike again.
I'm here, sorry.
Did you hear about the tab getting caught in the mustache? Are you okay if we leave that off?
I missed that part, but I'll.
I apologize.
There's a little bit of delay in the media connection. Give me about a minute and I may catch.
Yeah, you might. Okay. Do we have any other questions for Ms. Trocheck? Do we have any comments from the public? Okay, if not, I will bring it back to the Commission for action.
Mr. Mayor, move approval of ordinance number 20-11039 with the amendment of retaining, if I'm saying this correctly, section 10.29 violation of a public health order, which is currently in our, is that, what do you call that, list of ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. List of offenses, thank you.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 20-1139 with the amendment of leaving, with retaining section 10.29 violation of a public health order. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes four zero. 7.9.
Item 7.9, first reading ordinance number 20-11040, amending chapter 38, article one of the Salina Code by adopting the 2020 standard traffic ordinance.
Thank you. The city is asking the Commission to adopt ordinance number 20-11040, which is the 2020 standard traffic ordinance for Kansas Cities as published by the League of Kansas Municipalities. Like the UPOC, the STO handbook is modeled after the Kansas Uniform Act regulating traffic on the state's highways and serves as the primary traffic enforcement handbook for the Salina Police Department. As the Commission saw from my packet, there were no changes to the 2020 edition of the STO, and the Kansas League of Municipalities simply republished the previous edition from 2019. So there are no changes due to the shortened legislative session. There are standing local amendments to the STO as published, including section four, the authority of police, section 33, maximum speed limits, section 85, stopping, standing, or parking prohibited in specified places, and then section 114.4 unlawful operation of a golf cart. The, like the city's recommendation last year when I came before you to ask for the Commission to pass or adopt the STO, the city's making the same recommendation with regard to section 115. It is my opinion that there's an inadvertent error made by the Kansas League of Municipalities in publishing section 115 in the 220 edition of the STO. Section 115 makes it unlawful for any person 14 years of age or older to ride on any vehicle or upon any portion thereof not designated or intended for use of passengers when the vehicle is in motion. There is a section that provides some exceptions to that, and in subsection C, it reads that an employee under the age of 14 years would not be included in that section if they are basically involved in the necessary discharge of the employee's duties within truck bodies and space intended for merchandise or cargo. In my opinion, the section applies to individuals 14 years or older. It would make no sense for the exceptions to apply for individuals less than 14 years of age. Again, I think this is just an inadvertent error. It is also helpful to point out that the STO has a specific section as it involves unlawful writing by persons under 14 years of age, and that's section 182.2. In 182.2, it provides the same exception that section 115 provides with regard to employees. So I think that is simply an inadvertent error, and I would be asking the Commission to adopt the STO with the proposed language that I've set forth for section 115, which does differ slightly from the STO as published. As there really aren't any other changes, the city is going to ask the Commission to consider five options. consider five options. Approving ordinance number 20-11040 on first reading. Two, approving ordinance number 20-11040 with amendments as the city commission deems appropriate. Three, postpone consideration of ordinance number 20-11040 to a specified date and time to provide staff direction regarding any additional information or amendments the commission would like to have for further consideration. Number four, approve ordinance number 20-11040 on first reading and provide direction regarding additional information or amendments the city commission would like to request for further consideration at the time of the second reading. And the commission can also vote to deny ordinance number 20-11040. Staff is recommending option number one. Would stand for any questions?
Questions?
I have, I have a couple. I'd like to follow up on an inquiry from a citizen that we received earlier this summer regarding article 13, section 88, which is prohibiting placing a for sale sign on a car at the curb. It's something that seems like it's a, it's seen pretty commonly around town and I didn't, I think the point of the email is if it doesn't cause a traffic concern and it doesn't create some sort of danger, is there, I mean, is that something that we, that still needs to be fined and ticketed and prosecuted for?
Section 88 has two separate subsections within it. Section 88 states, "No person shall park a vehicle upon any roadway for the principal purpose of displaying such vehicle for sale or washing, greasing, or repairing such vehicle except repairs necessitated by an emergency." From my review of the section, it really is a public safety issue and that is the intent behind the ordinance. Certainly, we don't want drivers distracted as they are driving down a roadway and looking at vehicles parked in the side of the road that might have a for sale sign and we have a driver that is trying to look at that and drive down the roadway. So there is that potential for distraction. And certainly with regard to the second section or subsection, we don't want any individuals working on vehicles unless it's an emergency to change a tire in the roadway.
Yeah, and I certainly understand that. When you read the first part of that, article 13, section 88, I think it said something about the primary purpose being for, you know, to show a car for sale or whatever. If a person habitually parks in a legal parking spot and that's the main purpose is that that's where they park their vehicle and it has a for sale sign, I mean, it just seems a little problematic, but.
I cannot recall reviewing a citation since I've been in the city prosecutor's office that has dealt with this section. Certainly, the officer would have to determine if the placement of that vehicle is for the primary purpose of offering or displaying that vehicle for sale. And I think that the officers are probably very conservative about enforcement of that section, which is probably why I don't see, I can't recall any citations offhand that I've personally reviewed under that section.
Okay, okay, so a citizen would have the option of saying, "This is where I park my car every day." It's not, yeah, okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And a citizen can always also call the prosecutor's office, which we get quite a few calls about vehicles that are on the roadway and they've been cited as nuisance vehicles. And those individuals contact my office and primarily the complaint that we have is not with regard to the officer, it's the fact that the individual has actually transferred title to that vehicle, but the person that they've transferred title to has never tagged the vehicle. Therefore, the vehicle still shows that it is owned by citizen A when they've actually sold it to citizen B. I look at those situations and I routinely dismiss those matters. If the documentation can't be provided to my office, I review all of the documentation and make a decision based on that documentation. I would do the same thing with this sub, or with this section.
Gotcha, gotcha. And there was one other portion of that article 13, this was section 93, and actually, it's not just this particular citizen who reached out. I've gotten this from a couple of other people. And that allows the towing of a legal vehicle from the curb if it's been parked there for more than 48 hours. And the, I've gotten it from a lot of people who travel or they've had somebody visiting them over a holiday weekend and, you know, they've received a ticket for that. And I didn't know if there was, would that be the same sort of consideration if someone gets, gets that ticket and then they're like, "I was out of, I was out of town for four or five days. This is a legal parking place. My vehicle is titled and current and everything."
They certainly could present that information, but section 93 refers to disabled vehicles.
Okay.
Therefore, and typically, section 93 with regard to the towing provision as set forth in subsection B of that section, it talks about motor vehicles on public highways or any other property open to use by the public. And specifically, they refer to public highways and abandoned vehicles and that's, that's a safety issue. But that's not primarily what the Salina Police Department officers cite for the typical vehicle within the city. They generally will cite using the Salina City Code sections 38.51, which deals with public nuisance vehicles. And section 38-42A, which deals with parking on private or public property without the consent of the owner. And section 38-83, parking storing or depositing an inoperable motor vehicle property without enclosing it in a garage or other building. Those are the three sections that are primarily used if a vehicle is going to be towed. But the Salina Police Department will place the tow sticker on the vehicle advising the owner, registered owner of the vehicle, that they have 48 hours to remove the vehicle. But it's going to be because the vehicle is not legal to operate in its current condition, whether it is due to a mechanical situation. Many times, officers will see a vehicle with flat tires. That vehicle cannot be operated legally on the streets of Salina. So officers will cite that vehicle with a tow warning. I would note that the majority of the complaints come from citizens. And they are residents in the area who might see these vehicles that are inoperable sitting on the street without moving for days and weeks on end. If they call the Salina Police Department, the police department will send an officer out to review that. Again, if there's documentation that the owner can provide to show that they should be exempted from that ordinance, I will always review that and make a decision based on the information that they provide me.
And that's good to know and that's good to be able to pass along to people because I only know what, what they, what's been shared with me. And what's been shared with me by a few people has been operable vehicle, the owner was either out of town for work or on vacation. And, I mean, I'm sure that any, any code that we pass can be weaponized by a neighbor or whatever, but at any rate, it's helpful to let them know that just because the fact that they have received a ticket or their vehicle has been towed, that is not necessarily the, it's not an irrevocable situation. They can, they can pursue it, thank you.
And the other aspect of the ordinance with regard to inoperable vehicles, the Salina Code does include as an inoperable vehicle, a vehicle that does not have current vehicle registration. And that's probably the area that is sometimes confused by citizens, is that section of the ordinance, and I can appreciate that.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Any other questions?
I don't think so. Okay, any comments from the public? Okay, if not, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Move we approve ordinance number 20-11040 on first reading?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 20-11040 on first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes 4-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time, thank you. Okay, that will lead us to 8.1.
Item 8.1, consider acceptance of proposed easement and restricted access dedications on the proposed final plat of the Tony's subdivision, a proposed replat of the Tony's Pizza Shwan's corporate campus.
And before we get started, I just wanted to make the commission aware, as you may have known, I recuse myself on several other actions dealing with, with the Shwans or SFC Global. All the work that I have done for them is, has been completed. I've talked with, with legal counsel, with Mr. Bingston, and feel that there's no conflict that if I proceed forward here, I just want everyone to, to be aware of that because it may look unusual that I'm not accusing myself at this time, so, okay. Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor, commissioners. The area we're dealing with is part of the original Schilling subdivision. Back in 1966, when the federal government was preparing to turn the property over to the city of Salina, they prepared what they called the Schilling subdivision plat, which was really more of a base map for the area and was never, it's not actually recorded or indexed in the Register of Deeds office. And in 1997, the Salina Airport Authority, recognizing the deficiencies out there, undertook a very large project to essentially replat the entire Schilling subdivision. And they did that by creating a series of replats of subareas within the airport industrial center. And the property we're talking about this evening is in Schilling subdivision number five. And that subdivision was bordered by the K-State Polytechnic Campus on the north, the railroad tracks east of Centennial Road on the east, there's a creek channel, and the airport industrial subdivision on the south, and the runway on the west. And that subdivision number five contains 468 acres. It's divided into 124 individual lots and there's 15 different blocks. And that has been in place since 1998. This evening, we're looking at block 12, and that's the site of Tony's Pizza Manufacturing Facility. And it's bordered by Schilling Road on the north, Centennial Road on the east, Arnold Avenue, formerly Bailey Road on the south, and then again, Arnold Avenue on the west. In 2016, at the request of the Airport Authority, the original name Bailey Road, which was the road leading from Centennial to the airport terminal, was changed to Arnold Avenue to make it easier for out-of-town travelers to locate the passenger terminal, which is, has an address of Arnold Avenue. So what you can see here is, is block 12 is currently subdivided into 18 lots. It's bisected by several public streets and by all sorts of utility easements. And so the purpose of this replat is to eliminate a lot of those internal lot lines and merge SFC Global supply chains, land holdings into a single lot and block. And so there's three properties in the block that aren't included. If you could go over to the west side, Dustin, there's a property right here which is owned and will be retained by UniFirst Corporation. And then there's properties owned by the Salina Airport Authority. And those three properties are not within, included in the replat area. All the other properties either owned by or under contract by SFC Global Supply Chain. So their, their purpose is to, to get rid of the internal lot lines and vacate unneeded utility easements and street rights of way. And those street rights of way would include Scanlon Avenue and Jumper Road east of Arnold. There's also an identified stormwater runoff challenge with water coming from the west off the airport runway. And so there's a plan to divert stormwater through a major storm drain culvert that would go around the property in the southwest. There's no changes to access proposed, but this section of Scanlon Road, if you could go back to the aerial, Dustin, this section of Scanlon Road here will be vacated and closed to public traffic. This portion of Jumper Road right here is currently a public street with a dead end. That will be vacated and closed as well. One of the challenging things about this area is there's all kinds of utilities running through this property. And one of the purposes of the plat is to identify which ones of those will be public utilities owned and maintained by the city and which will be private. And so there will be a note on the plat basically stating that all water lines, fire hydrants, sanitary steward lines, and storm sewer pipes that aren't located within a dedicated easement are private lines and those will be owned and maintained by Shwans. As I noted, there's a drainage easement here for a large storm culvert that will go around the southwest side of the site. There is a stormwater discharge detention pond that's proposed on the south side of Arnold Road, and that is going to be outside the boundaries of the plat. So this property here has been acquired as part of the project. And the storm drainage will come here to the stormwater detention pond here and then be discharged over to this creek channel. Maintenance of that channel is the city responsibility and staff is working with Shwan's design team on designs and cost estimates for improving the flow and the capacity of that channel. There has been an EPA grant application submitted, but long-term, those drainage improvements will probably be paid for through a combination of grant funds and city funds. So only those utility easements shown on the plat, and I tried to highlight those for you in your packet that's shown as yellow on your, your plat in there, those will be retained as utility easements. Any other existing easements will be vacated by this plat. And then we're adding this large storm drainage easement that would go through that property. This plat originally went to the Planning Commission on August 4th. And the Planning Commission voted seven to zero to approve the plat, but they put a condition on that required the configuration of Jumper Road to either be retained as it is or be converted to a private street. And the reason for that was that the surveyor working for SFC Global did not take into account that the north half of Jumper Road, if vacated, would revert to UniFirst Corporation. So following the Planning Commission meeting, but before this went to the city commission, staff met with representatives of SFC Global Supply Chain and they indicated that neither- staff met with representatives of SFC Global Supply Chain, and they indicated that neither of those two options were workable from their perspective, and so, they expressed a desire to keep the western portion of Jumper Road as a public street and to vacate the eastern portion. The problem with that is that today, it's a public street that dead ends and has a turnaround on it. If it were shortened to here, the turnaround would have to be moved to that location. The Planning Commission considered that at their September 1st meeting, and then postponed consideration to allow further design options to be considered. Then, when it came back on September the 15th, Shwans indicated that they were supportive of the idea of making it a purely private access drive, and so, that meant that it was no longer a public street, it was no longer subject to city street design standards, and that questions about fire department access and circulation would be addressed as part of the building permit review and not part of this plat. So, the full width and length of Jumper Road will be vacated as a public street. It will become a private shared access drive. There's some discussion about transferring ownership from UniFirst to Shwans. Upon full vacation, this section of street will no longer be owned or maintained by the city. It's not subject to the subdivision regulations, so their designers will work with the fire marshal to come up with a acceptable fire apparatus turnaround within the campus. The pavement from roughly this point west will remain in place. This pavement will all be removed. And so, Planning Commission did not act on their street design variation request because it was withdrawn. They voted to remove condition number one, since that had been satisfactorily addressed by the applicant, and they voted on September 15th to approve the proposed final plat without any design variations, and that's what's coming before you this evening. So, your options would be to approve a motion vacating existing internal streets and easements and accepting the offered easement and restricted access dedications, authorizing the mayor to sign the plat. You could postpone consideration of this application to a future meeting date, and if you feel additional information needs to be provided. You could decline to approve the requested right-of-way and street vacations or to accept the new easement dedications. The result of this decision would be to leave Scanlon Avenue, Jumper Road, and all existing easements in place, and the plat as proposed could not be recorded. Staff would recommend alternative number one. So, with that, staff would be open to any questions that you might have.
Questions for staff?
Says it all.
There were no real issues with the plat, other than just the question about Jumper Road and the lack of awareness that if it were vacated, that the north half was going to go to UniFirst, not to them, and so, they have brought UniFirst into the discussions, and we believe that's been worked out.
No questions? Any comments from the public? If not, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Does the mayor move we accept the proposed, yeah, two different wordings here? We approve vacating existing internal streets and easements and accepting the offered easement and restricted access dedications and authorizing the mayor to sign the plat of the Tony's subdivision on behalf of the city?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve a motion vacating existing internal streets and easements and accepting the offered easement and restricted access and signing the final plat of the Tony's subdivision. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 4-0. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, that will lead us to other business, and Commissioner Davis, I believe you had something you wanted to bring to the commission?
I do. It's partially written. Took about a week before I could write this and not use words I would regret using later. I don't know whether to be embarrassed, mad, disappointed, or afraid after witnessing firsthand some of the behavior at the study session on policing held on September 21st. For all the news media options available in Salina, I was caught off guard by the signs and comments regarding defunding police. This was not a topic on the agenda or in the presentation. Valuable time spent commenting on this could have been used to discuss the issues at hand. I think what bothered me most, however, was the disrespect that was shown, Mr. Santiago Vasquez during and after his comments. The behavior was reprehensible for this city, which has much more class than was exhibited on that day. Not only was there booing and hissing during his comments, when he returned to his seat, a man clad in his blue-black-and-gray Stars and Stripes regalia jabbed his flagpole at Mr. Vasquez as he walked back to his seat. I apologize at this time to Mr. Vasquez for not stopping the meeting and asking the mayor to have that person removed from the assembly. No one in Kansas should suffer that indignity. I took a picture of that person, I'm assuming with his wife, and if you're not sure if you're that person, please come see me. I'll show you the picture so that you can find out if you are indeed that person. Proper decorum invites disagreement, but not in a disagreeable fashion. Several speakers attacked the Black Lives Matter and the Sunflower Coalition. It was disappointing that the only response to these groups and concepts was to attack the messengers and demand transparency of the groups, while in the same moment argue against the need for transparency of police operations. Transparency is a two-way street. Not one of those attacking the legitimacy of these two groups addressed the events in our society that spawned the need for their existence. Are we so morally bankrupt or embarrassed by the need to have to publicly call for the protection of any segment of our society that we can only attack the messenger, hoping the message will quietly wither away? Did we forget that these young people in the Sunflower Coalition represent some of the best minds in Salina, Kansas? And whether you agree with all of their requests, and I didn't agree with all their requests, but I was very proud that they put forth the effort to come up with these requests, to go from zero to having a citywide study session, and for this body to even consider their suggestions, I think is nothing short of an amazing accomplishment. It is obvious that many in Salina have drank the Kool-Aid and fallen victim to the ludicrous thought that if they are for Blue Lives Matter, that means they are against Black Lives Matter or vice versa. This is a ploy to divide our country. One group is not mutually exclusive of the other. If your support of Blue Lives Matter means that you can't support Black Lives, you are at a moral crossroads in your life, and the existence of our country is right there next to you. Don't you think there are black families of black police officers who love both groups? Please read about the issues before coming forward. Do your due diligence, investigate, inform your own conclusion. Don't just regurgitate what you hear on TV. The City Commission needs to know what you feel, not what TV channel you listen to. Support the police. We hear it a lot. It's a very nice chant. Give our Salina Police Department the training, equipment, the training, the manpower, the training, legal surveillance technology, the training, quality improvement mechanisms, and more training. That's why we have that building on the west side of I-135. The firing range, I'll be honest with you, for me, we threw that in free of charge. The important part of that building is up front. We support our children. We praise them when a job has been done well, and we teach them to monitor and improve their decision-making and performance when a teaching moment arrives. Support like transparency is a two-way street. I hope the next open study session will bring out citizens sincerely interested in improving our community. Citizens who can bring meaningful contributions will make our job as the commission much easier. Our job is not to necessarily come to the meeting with our minds made up, agree or disagree with what we hear. My job is to represent the thoughts of everyone in this city to the extent possible. It doesn't matter if they voted for me or not. My job is to listen. Please help us, and most importantly, don't embarrass Salina, Kansas again, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. I, to let you know, as we're preparing for our next meeting, I have talked to City Manager Scrag and discussed with him that my opening remarks will be in more detail than they were last time, and we'll try to ask the individuals to, we had a study session, I don't think, a lot of people understood what a study session was, and to my dismay, I think on both sides, they wanted us to listen to them, but I'm not sure they were listening to us. We had them come up and talk about defunding the police, as we've commented, none of the five of us sitting up here have talked about that. We had someone talking that we don't need tanks in our community, and I don't remember the five of us ever talking about the need for tanks. So, I'm going to ask that they also open their ears and listen to us also to know that we are, as a group, my job as mayor, my job is to bring about compromise. There's five of us that sit up here, and we have five different opinions of where we need to be, and I think our job is to get to the place where it's best for the community. And I agree with you that this is a very emotional manner, matter. I think the national press has led to that, and our goal is to deal with Salina, and what we need to do is to stop the division and to work on unity. I think we're, as a group, have said, we do support the police. As you just mentioned, we've spent millions of dollars on a training center. It's not a shooting range, it's a training center, and we hope that we will have the best-trained police force in the country. Doesn't mean that there will not be mistakes made by police officers at some time, but all we can do is do the best to support them. So, I appreciate your words, and we will discuss before the next one about how we will be respectful of each other. We have to do that up here. We don't agree with each other, but the whole idea is we need to respect the other person and to show some respect, as we would want them to respect us. So, my words will be in much more detail next time, and I appreciate your thoughts.
If I might weigh in briefly, I was dismayed by the behavior. You know, we have rules of procedure that very clearly say we prohibit signs, we prohibit booing, hissing, clapping, et cetera, and, you know, I did receive a text message from a level-headed person who is very much in the center on this issue, saying, taking issue with some of Commissioner Hodges' comments, and of course, I had not read her comments at that time. I still haven't read Commissioner Hodges' comments, but my response to this individual was, "I haven't read Commissioner Hodges' comments, but do you understand that we have rules of procedure that are there for a reason?" And the reason is that booing and hissing and clapping and having signs and banners tend to intimidate people from being open with their comments, and in this forum, it's important that we get to hear from everybody in an open manner. I did not notice some of the things you talked about with Mr. Vasquez, but I did notice that he was disrespected, along with a couple of other people, some of who are in the room So, after I explained that to her, she said, "Oh, well, I didn't realize those were the rules." And so, I think that we've made some progress, and, but I think it is, and I've written an email to the city manager saying, "I think we need to be more prepared at this next session because it's clear that some people don't understand the mask ordinance, and they need, you know, if this is going to be a demonstration, then have it outside of the facility where you can wave all your banners and signs that you want. That's your right to free speech, but in the hearing, we have to act to protect everybody's right to speak up without intimidation." And so, I agree with you in large part, Commissioner Davis. It was, I was more than a bit embarrassed by some of the activity.
One of the questions I'm going to ask a legal counsel about is, and I think we've discussed this before, is in our attending a meeting, we stayed in there, signs will not be allowed in the building. We've allowed them with, the BSL individuals have come bringing signs. Again, I guess what I need as mayor, and we probably need as a commission, is direction whether we have the ability to ask individuals not to have those signs present under the First Amendment? If we could get some direction, because we've allowed it before, and I don't, I don't like it, but it's kind of like, I guess, we need to know what we can and cannot allow, what are, we actually have the ability to do.
The, thank you, Mayor. The city manager had spoken to me about wanting to address that more specifically and more conclusively, and I can't do that thoroughly this evening and won't attempt to, frankly. There is some further examination to be done. It is in the area of public forum law, and in my opinion, I can say that what we do need to look at carefully and ultimately have some further direction from the governing body, I believe, it will depend upon the environment in which the matter is being considered and in applying First Amendment public forum law. The matter of what is allowed in a particular context and how the matter has been couched in terms of whether it's an issue being addressed in the public forum context or in the context as it was during your study session that was in a, in a different location, in a different setting. Those are the types of factors that affect the City Commission's latitude in terms of either regulating or prohibiting.
And I wasn't expecting an answer today, but I just, I think that's, if we could get some direction, you know, for the future. Not only for this, this topic, but I'm sure there's going to be other topics down the road that we'll have to, you know, deal with, so if you could do that. deal with. So, if you could do that, that'd be great. So...
That, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
If I could just say a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to thank Mayor Hoppick because when I walked into that room and looked at that crowd, I did not envy you being in the position that you were in. But I just want to say, I, you, you did a really good job. And I'm, I'm just very disappointed that people didn't ask, respond better to your requests for better behavior. The only other thing, and this is just on a technical aspect, I've heard from a lot of people who watched it on Salina Media Connection, that it was very, very difficult to hear people. And I was wondering if we do operate in a, a setting that's different from our normal room here, that we maybe get some technical assistance so that each commissioner can be mic'd. We can make sure that we have better sound quality for the, for the speakers because it was an issue that, that I heard about from several people. So...
We can certainly do that. And if we had anticipated the, the crowd, we would have had additional sound provided for this meeting, but we didn't anticipate it would be as large as it was. So, we will be looking for some outside sound assistance.
Okay. Anything else come before the Commission? Not all except a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. A motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We're adjourned.